And would you call this meeting to work? This is a regular session of the Brooklyn Council Board of Education on the purpose of transacting appropriate board business. In compliance with chapter two, three of Act of nineteen seventy-five, notice that this meeting is advertised in the Morris County Record to copies of each and of this meeting for appropriately posted and available to all.
Mrs. Bardot.
Here.
Mr. Brandon.
Here.
Mrs. Cabana.
Here.
Mr. Chen. Mrs. Hermy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. McBride.
Mr. Mill.
Here.
Mrs. Noeck.
Also President Mr. Fertini, Superintendent Principal. We have a call.
Thank you. Uh, please stand for the first one. My name is Mrs. Tuzakai of the United States of America and here to call it for which stands one nation under God in the principle of liberty and justice for all. We have several presentations to see, but we're going to start out with one dot or agenda, uh, for today. The show that's going to present it, uh, Eagle Scout project for our consideration. Welcome. I will add, I had a state review of the green bear of this presentation.
I actually have that board here for the actual presentation. If you'd like to buy your right there.
Oh, that's okay. Whatever, whatever you're.
Yeah. Hello, uh, I'm Tanay Mishra. Uh, I was a student here a year ago. So, um, yes, I was a student here a year ago. Uh, I'm in Boy Scout right now and I am almost in Eagle Scout. If this board could help me with my project that I plan on making here at RDS. Um, this is my previous school. My sister still goes here. I have a lot of memories linked to this place. But I was thinking, you know, as my final thing as a Boy Scout, I want to give back to this school. Um, I also got help, a lot of help from the green team, of which Mrs. Hermy and Mrs. Noeck are part of. And they've given me a lot of guidance through all of this. And I want fully commit to this project and not gonna hang up in the middle and say, oh, I'm too busy, I don't have the money for this. I have the resources like necessary and I will go through this project. So this is the basic blueprint, you could call it, of the plan I'm going to be making here. So this is going to be, going to be the rain garden. Right now, this is at the entrance of the school. It's kind of ditch there that just has a tree stump and a bunch of rocks surrounding it. So that's where I plan on removing all of that and making a rain garden there. It'll be right next to the walkway and water from the ditch the school has already made would pile up there, it would be clean. Any trash in that water that was brought in would be taken out and the water would go to the forest and the lake, make clean painter and more. This is a few more from the actual area. This is a photo off the blue map. So you can see that's the entrance parking lot and then that's, this is the actual area. And then, as you can see, a bunch of rocks, um, tree stump here. And then there's also a pipe right here that leads under the walkway and that's actually how the water gets to the forest. This is the more close-up plan of what the garden will be looking like. So there's gonna be a special kind of plant here called hardy plants. There are plants that can withstand, you know, different temperatures, harsh conditions, things such as oil, salt being piled on top of them. They can handle that and they will clean that out of the water that will go down these rocks, you know, slowing the flow so the plants at the bottom can properly absorb the water given to them. During rainy seasons, sometimes during the spring or maybe right after winter, uh, the water down there will act as a mini swamp, allowing for different animals and plants to grow there as well. And if the rain guarding and most likely when it overflows, it will be going through that PVC pipe going on to the other side, then going to the forest and the rain. So these are a few of the plants, uh, I will be using. So this is the tassac sege, I believe is that one or this one. Um, it should be placed in the wettest areas, that means all the way on the bottom. So that way it can absorb all the water and grow properly. It's, it has the proper nutrients needed to provide life to things like butterflies, you know, dragonflies, bees, all of that. Uh, the soft rush is right here. It's gonna be in a circle around the middle part. Uh, it won't directly be on it, there's too much water will harm it. So it'll just be a little bit above it. Uh, the Jersey blueberry, uh, mid-level, same as the other one. Except these are blueberries and it will provide food to different animals such as rabbits, hares, bunnies, boxers, deer. And then the plants on top, you know, those hardy plants on top, uh, cardinal flowers, these ones, they're gonna be absorbing most of that, you know, toxic water, you could call it. It'll be sucking like major things that infest the water, like plastics, rubber, salt, oil, and absorbing all of that. These are some of the animals that may be attracted by this rain garden. There are the bees, rabbits, boxers, birds, butterflies, frogs and toads during the rainy seasons. You know, leaving their pets over there, insects and other, you know, smaller, different creatures. So this is the basic timeline I have for how I will start this project. Uh, after this board meeting, hopefully I'll be allowed to actually get my troops' signature on it. And then I will find professionals to test the soil for pre-existing nutrients to make sure I don't need to put too much fertilizer or anything else needed for the soil. Uh, me and a few other of my friends will plan out, or plan out where to find and buy all the plants needed. Uh, and during this summer, uh, we will work on the garden for two to three days. So day one will be the removal of all existing things there. So we're gonna be digging the hole deeper, we're gonna be getting rid of all the rocks and getting rid of that tree stump in the middle. We will rearrange the rocks into the plan I had from before and we'll start by planting the stronger plants on the edges and then a few plants in the middle sections if we have time for them, if there's enough people. The third day is really just to make sure everything is done, you know, add all the plants in and then just test it once again to make sure all the plants are stable and watering them once in a while. And after every month, I'll do tests both in the river, the forest, or the lakes are the lake, the forest and the garden itself. And then maintenance work could be done by the students here, could be done by my crew, it could be done by a mountainous one, but it's, uh, it's an opportunity, a service hours for all of them. And the maintenance itself include a removal of plastic bags if they could get into part of the garden, uh, trimming of the shrubs, checkups, like I said, we're gonna be testing the soil, uh, removal of any other large unwanted objects, some rocks, anything like that gets in there, uh, repairing of the signboard, uh, that I'll talk about that one later. And a possible hour and a half, um, hour, two hour and a half of service hours to anyone who needs, you know, down for high school or just for themselves. So what this garden will achieve, as I've already stated, it will help to feed water to the surrounding forest and water its bodies. It will lead to better plant, plant growth in both of those areas and it will attract more species. And, uh, as I said before, I was a student here, so I know during multiple of our, during multiple of our science classes, we talked about ecosystems. And having one right here at the school for students to observe would be amazing. For them to see and actually, you know, face-to-face have a, you know, see a rain garden or an ecosystem. And it will help provide a basic plan for other students or faculty members to make rain gardens in their own home or other lakes for, for classes. And some other plans for the rain garden, well, other than the rain garden, is refreshing the signboard that's right next to it. Uh, you will have information on the rain garden, such as the animals there, how it works throughout the seasons, the plants, uh, you know, all the cycles, water cycle, carbon cycle, things like that. Um, and then again, having a service hour opportunity to all students, members of the school, things like that.
I appreciate working with students, especially with students who are going to come back and be a staff. That's, that's, so once again, thank you tonight, we look forward to work with them.
Thank you.
Um, does anybody have any questions for, for, for this project? And I assume we have to do some sort of approval?
Um, oh, for the approval, I'll come back at a later date. Maybe I'll send, I'll probably send an email to either you or Mr. Fertini. I just need a online or in-person signature on. Uh, I just need a online or in-person signature of a piece of paper. It's called the, uh, Eagle Scout worksheet. I just need, uh, anyone on this board really to sign that and I'll be allowed to go through with my project.
Okay. So, the board, are you supposed to do any of the board stuff?
Okay.
And if we, if we will, if, if not, we'll, we'll wait. Well, thank you very much, that was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
I ask you a question. So I think your presentation was really great because it makes me think I need a rain garden.
Yeah.
But I'm just curious, and maybe I missed it, but how do you plan to fund the purchase of all those beautiful plants? Um, I know maintenance, like the community service hours, you know, some of the kids in high school, but that initial fund, um, funding, how do you plan to do that?
So funds will be given by myself, uh, the green team, I believe, has offered a few funds and then a external group has also, uh, said that they would allow me to have some of their money to purchase the plants and the resources needed to make the garden.
That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to go through a few of those things and I also feel consistently I've always said you guys always scored like you're the highest scorers and then you broke on themselves. And you continue to demonstrate that as you know.
It's up there.
But but in a way it's you know it's honest feedback and it is um you know I think it really took the board self evaluation and like I almost can get a story or I almost can see what your year is going to look like and how things need to hold based on the things that that you wrote and that you said. So just kind of wanted to just go through a couple of things, you know, one of the things that we always seem to talk about is in looking at your goals and what that you know that challenge of how are we doing tracking? How are we doing measuring? How are we doing staying focused on it? And then how are we communicating to the public what you know what accomplishments are being made with respect to the goals? So there was some mention in here saying that we're starting to kind of get planned together, right? That we're starting that process. So I just kind of wondered kind of where do you feel like you are with that and where do you see yourself going with that?
I know I can say that the vision would be like for the board goals would be to have an action plan, you know, consistent to goal. So okay, here it is, periodically updating the board on like this, you know, training, for example, for the board certification. You know, we eat, here's something we have, here's something we need, here's what we've done so far. That's the vision, the execution of course, we have to work on it. But we have needed additional awareness to get physically some of those other challenges we actually need more to address here. But I think we will see where we want to go in the system, you know, I think we'll get there.
I think for me, the biggest challenge that came up in that area is this is the thing we always have is the patience. I don't think we did a really good job of engaging how we didn't even come along with my progress. We paid progress. I don't think we did really a good job of creating that. I think we can always do better.
So then how do you see that happening?
Well, we're one of the things we might talk about. Now, it is a newsletter in the community. If you put a newsletter on what we're doing, what we achieve, maybe things we still have, what we want, what we need. I don't know, I'm expanding here. I don't know. What we're going to do is maybe we could be getting feedback from the community through a media. We'll reach out, you know, we'll probably need to reach out a little bit. That's 20 minutes. We can post it on the website too. We can achieve something. We should say, today.
Just like a little note from the board, you know.
Yeah, this is not, I don't think they pay for that. I don't think the public has any idea how we're doing. I think we did a job of it, but I don't think they can understand that.
It was like evidence, it was um one of our highest scores is considered as vision mission and goals, like interplanning. But like one of our lowest scores we gave ourselves was how we communicate, right? Yeah, so it's very clear, yeah, articulated as well.
The newsletter, I think it was going up to the last meeting, it could be centered around the board goals, you know, perhaps, you know, and you know, here's the goals we set and how our accomplishment that keep us on track, you know, communicating to our public, you know, people's direction. And then other things can be, you know, the revenue, which is what you want to communicate, that could be the center of it, but other than anything else that we think could be a good communication to get through it, that makes sense, just talking about.
To me, to me, from what I've seen for this one year, the drive and sincerity to do better and be better, not only as an individual, individual board mentors, but collectively is very evident. So that's something that I've been impressed with a long way. And that's something I think we should be celebrating, community-wide, we should know their accomplishments and things they do to make themselves better as a board.
Yeah, I mean, kind of governance is kind of sometimes one of those lost or those forgotten aspects, right? Of what, when you think about the accomplishments in a school, you think about the students and what are our staff doing? But you know, there's definitely how the board functions and what the board does has a major impact on all of those other things. So the point is important to recognize and acknowledge that we can handle that thing. So and really the message that you send to the staff, the message that you send to the community to really just base on your commitment to the work that you're doing. Then the next section we looked at policy and it seemed like the board, you know, pretty much on top of, right? The regular policy work that comes in, but then again, kind of saying, okay, now we want to go a step further, right? And say, okay, how do we now then take that and maybe look at the policies being a little more proactive? Just kind of make sure are they aligned with what what we're doing? And then also kind of saying, and how do we even maybe better reflect with, you know, see if we can reflect kind of the values of the community, right? And the values of the board and somewhat of the policy. Someone mentioned it would be nice if they could be more a little like locally, you know, kind of locally tailored, right? So, yeah, just kind of keeping that movement, right? And the next section was student achievement. And there in that area, like I said, it's just kind of evident throughout the entire evaluation. But you know, definitely clear in here, as you know, you're saying that every board member was focused on it, it's like a paramount goal. And even you know, it was even mentioned, one of the comments that you restructured your committees. You had like two committees that were kind of tied that focused on that and something else. They decided to separate them to make sure that it was given the attention that it needs. You mentioned that there's an increase from data by the that you're seeing and working with. And you know, celebrating staff and student accomplishments. That again, it's very that, okay, we can always do more, right? Saying, okay, we're doing good with this, but we could continue to do more for all of our students. We can continue. And kind of that word communicate surfaces through everything, right? Like it surfaced through the goals, it surfaced through our student achievement, it surfaced through the work that you're doing as a board, like in your committees. Just kind of one of those kind of themes that just kind of emerged throughout the board self evaluation. And then the next part was looking at your governance work. And again, you know, just kind of as you look at the words that the way the board describes itself, I mean, like respectful, efficient, well-prepared, understands your role, has a strong commitment, so like unified. So those are all things that like you are kind of unhaving to worry about those types of things, right? Like you're all like, we know what we're here for and we're not going to let those other things distract us from what we're here for. So we recognize that we have to conduct ourselves this way in order to accomplish the other things. So probably there was like several comments about onboarding of new members. So just kind of, and that was the lowest indicator on the board self evaluation. So just kind of wondered what your thought was or about that or what you're hoping to do with that?
I think we've discussed in the past having some type of mentorship, like we're onboarding, particularly for people that are on the board longer or really kind of, you know, even not to throw Barry, but the president, vice president, no matter. To kind of take somebody under their wing, mentor them, talk to them about governance, you know, what to expect in your training for the first year and just with the format even, so. We had, I think, been looking at in evidence, different new member orientation. There's like, you could tell they were formerly binders, but it's a document that has like pertinent information. And we've talked about what does it look like to have rounds of line phone numbers, to direct links to the proper folders or where to find them, so.
Just kind of formalizing.
Yeah, formalizing it a little bit or like, you do tell them, right?
It's not, yeah, I mean, there is, yeah, it's very good on the administrative side, saying like, this is what a report looks like. This is a contract, this is, you know, but there's, there's just more.
There is more.
That we could do.
A mentorship is good. Your first year on the board, it's like reading your novel in the middle of it. When the character is, when it takes a while, I'll figure it out. So having to mentor you like, look between the dots.
And we also, the governance committee, we reached out, I guess, actually, the Jersey School Board's presentations at workshops and other places. Association, we did copies of, they won retention in our school district presentations. We got copies of those in the conference room too. You know, I think it was on the agenda, but we had to push it back a little bit because we're looking at some other things. Yeah, since we didn't have any new members on the general.
There was, there was a survey that the National School Board Association did of asking people how long they felt like they knew what they were doing after they got on the board. And the average response was like two years, very much about that. But that people felt like it took them before, they play, okay, now I got, now I kind of get what I'm supposed to be doing here, right? So, yeah, so that's kind of to the point of what do we do to kind of help shorten that learning curve and kind of make that two years less if we can. You know, recognizing that, you know, we want to help you get, help you run the history of the process and kind of get comfortable doing this work. So that's great that you've got some of those other manuals. And the Washington Township Board just did a really good job of the calendar. They committed a 12-month calendar and beyond a board calendar, they also calendered out all their committee work and have that on like a 12 months. So I can share that with you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it was the first time I've seen someone take it beyond, okay, this is what we do every month as a board. But then they said, okay, but then this is what these committees do over a 12-year period, so. Then the next section was looking at resource management, which again, that's, you know, a high area for the board. And probably as much as we know that you're doing the best you can with what you've got and, you know, committed to student achievement, health, safety, security, infrastructure needs, have good audits and then, you know, the board understands its role in this process. That kind of the overwhelming theme in the comments was looking about revisiting the referendum, right? And how to, I believe, you know, kind of reassess that. So kind of starting to see board goals formally, right? As I was kind of looking through those, but I'm sure that's probably something that is not off the table yet, right? And then the last section of this was the user leadership. And again, that's where that communication comes back, right? Just kind of making sure that everything we're doing, and it really is a challenge because as much as we do, it's just things that evolve so fast and the needs continue to grow and people's lives and things, you know. We're the ones that have to continue to find new and better ways to reach, right? You know, kind of those days of thinking, well, they're not here at our booth, we must be doing everything right and everybody's happy. And so saying like, that doesn't diminish our obligation to try to communicate to our community, to hear from them and to be connected to them. So how do we continue to try to do that and make that count? So I guess that's maybe kind of where your newsletter thing comes in, right? But with that, I don't know. And then I guess I kind of glossed over, so you also kind of talked about communication from committees. So just kind of wondered, I saw that was mentioned, they have like a piece that they're reporting out. You know, it still doesn't seem like there were comments about like what more can we do? So I just kind of wondered how you feel about the information you're getting from the committee that you're not on and kind of how you're managing that as a group.
Maybe you have suggestions because I think about it, I know someone mentioned this in the past, but we often get our committee reports. We're all, we have it, we're all, I tell sometimes I don't write the notes at the right time. And thinking the communication occurs here a lot, when we report out on the committees and find out things. And how can we kind of bridge that gap a little and how can we meet together collaboratively to discuss things that have happened behind scenes a little bit more? And bridge that gap, which is my opinion.
So I guess kind of boy, so like trying to do like through scheduling, right? Saying like our committee meetings have to happen here so that we can get the notes and the information so that when the whole board needs and we have to have our board meeting, we've had time to review that versus, you know, a lot of times the meetings are either happening before the board meeting or like, you know, or sometimes like that and boards have tried to be intentional, let's say, okay, this week is going to be committee meeting. This week is going to be with to get the reports out and then this is the week the board's going to be. So that you are not stuck in that cycle, right? So it's just kind of more figuring out how scheduled on the way so they can have that access. And then also like a way to make sure that the, that the communication is well organized. Like there was one board that just kind of had like a calendar and they like loaded the document like on this day, this is the agenda. And then handed the committee meeting minutes to it, you know, so that everyone knew where to look for it and have access to it. So I'm not sure how you're managing getting the information out to the rest of the board, but that kind of should be the goal, right? That if you come to the meeting tonight, you should have the information you need to be making more decisions and having important conversations. And tonight should not be the first time you're learning these things, right? So while, you know, kind of saying that while reporting out about what's happening in the committees is helpful, really the main group that should be benefiting from that would be the community stakeholders. Because as a board, ideally, you and the board had access and seen that information. So it's kind of a normal way to just kind of summarize to the public that what's been going on here.
And our meetings are a little bit varied, like that's not a bad idea if we have the meetings and we need the next meeting to report out of that to keep it more on schedule maybe. But our meetings don't always line up to the same meetings. Some of them do, but not all of them.
Maybe, have you met, think about, maybe we talked, we talked about like maybe governance should take this on? But I don't, I think it's more collaborative, yes, you know, conversation. You know, I feel in the past we were a little more intentional of trying to be like the second Tuesday or the second Wednesday. Every, or the first Monday of the month is going to be this meeting. So you just knew. And then even if you didn't get the notes, you would know to ask, hey, how was your meeting? Did we know what happened and if it was on a calendar? And so having a little more awareness is something to.
It's something you said the two weeks before committee meetings, well, you know, if you don't know it's that week, get the notes done. It gives us plenty of time.
Like that.
Intriguing.
It's just to be intentional about, right? Make sure that you are getting the information you need. I think there was even a mention about like when you need report happening, right? So like, should I was that time for, someone mentioned it would be nice if I had more time, right? So what are you getting with now?
That might be a good way to, yeah.
And is that posing to be a challenge or, I mean, like would you prefer it be Friday or is it Monday? And maybe not ideal, but it's working or?
I think we prefer Friday. Yeah, I think it would be good.
It would be great too, but that Friday, all board committee, committee reports were in, you know, and then you just need to go look at the folders.
Continue reporting. That's the end of continue reporting.
Do you have seven alerts in Google Forms where you could use your drive or share with everyone? That'd be a nice way like to hang it. Just be like a standing calendar thing, like just things like, you know, like a reminder on the calendar.
Or like committee report, it's just a, you know, I was thinking of taking extra step. Sending a message that you're doing, it's just like, you know, give the agenda. Committee reports should be available at the same time. So it's automatic.
We don't have one person who's in charge of the calendar, the committee calendar.
Actually, if we decide as a collectively, we want to try to schedule meetings that way, we can try and strive to do that in this board. So something we can do is.
And it's like chairs, like chair.
Yeah, if that seems to be a good idea to one of us, you know, to talk about, you know, whatever. Later on, of course, if we're talking about even better, you know, if you all think that's a great idea to try to strive better. Because then we tried the first, the other person, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, but that never works because the board meetings move around. First holidays, the school calendar moves around. So that's usually runs afoul, you know, when we try to do the first whatever month. But if you tie, you know, the district and look at where the board meetings are, you know, two weeks back, you know, okay, committee meetings. You know, there's something we said to them. It's a very intriguing idea to keep, you know, in a good way.
I think we just didn't generally come upon the, to the group, the committee chair, right? You said it's, they could work within that week, so.
Yeah, so if we all think that's a great idea, well, committee chairs, you know, we roll, let's try to get like the board calendar and go two weeks back and just get all those meetings.
Do you want to be, two weeks or?
Try to. I mean, there's, I mean, there's some, there's some base like governance that doesn't necessarily have stuff on the agenda. For example, that, you know, there's some things that, you know, it's kind of how that is written, that is like, but, you know, once they're pretty much tied, agenda driven, like, you know, program, personnel, policy, money, facilities. Yeah, it's a lot of hustle, but facilities doesn't beat us a lot, but, yeah.
Does anyone use that Google Calendar in your school?
I think there was confusion. I think it was different, maybe that calendar had certain dates. We were setting different dates.
No. I use it, I, it's funny, I use it for myself and I think I created a board committees thing. Do you guys get things?
I do, I do.
Yeah. Yeah, so like I put that as a graduate, you know, like I put certain things in my own, but I just, you know. There is a, there is a quarter that we use that we're all in. And so I just, when I add it to the calendar, I have it under that, under that quarter.
Further on, we did discuss having planned committee meetings in advance, and that's sort of associated with the calendar. But we did have something like two weeks prior to the board meeting, sent that out. We could plan, I guess, for a much of those.
Which would basically put me in then that first week in the rough.
So I feel like a guideline, you know, as best as we can, let's try to, you know, that way. We probably will schedule it out through June anyway, so now we're going to be saying, we're going to fly Arkansas never. So, you know, if we all agree, let's try to, let's try to do that for moving forward. Actually, that might be a, depending committees are going to schedule meetings, right? So I am moving forward for, I mean, you know, this is, we did include you in the school year and we got here.
I have one minor suggestion, maybe when we're in, I mean, maybe this is, this might just be an idea or a best practice that, you know, we have the agenda on the computer and they just fill in our notes in the moment and then post it and then we're all downable a little bit better, so.
Then the word flyer, definitely, then the story.
That should be done in your.
It should be, I think, oftentimes, I don't know, it gets that, it's a great job. Do, do, but I think that's a, it's a good, a good program.
I love the calendar.
Most part.
Where you're like, this is the calendar, this is the agenda, it's like all.
You have a great template.
Yes, I, I just usually have the agendas for the personal program. Means for example, the topics, date, and members present and future dates. So I'll close out, but I can share them with you.
Yeah, it's a great template, that's where you can do this all. Everything's already there. They're already released.
Same corner.
Yep.
And I love when there's ways to like, they put agenda items, like topics and things you would like to discuss, to be projected, you know. There's always that, there's always a couple of things to remember.
So many governments have tried to use the, the standard one that came out and just been using it over and over and over. It's like there's something in that bucket to talk about, to talk about it. You know, sometimes there's things we'd like to talk about, but we don't get to talk about it, but they're still there to remind us that they're there. Only in total. To talk about it or push it forward.
What, similar, maybe similar thought, is I sometimes think that we discuss the committee, we should we have, you know, that committee, I think that. Which makes sense in some cases, but we didn't discuss the committee, but I think we should be more more positive that for voting on whatever motion is, board meeting, we should, if it's significant, try to talk about it in the committee.
Right, like I would love to get the agenda and be like, I know about everything.
Right, I usually have the prior, so.
Going back to the slide that we just talked about, would that be feasible? Is that already covered, is motions wrapped without two weeks' time, two weeks' time? See, I mean.
Maybe you don't have to.
I do have a topic here.
A lot of time before, before in that week and things are changing.
It's like we got voting time, I mean, I just thought we even see them before Monday.
But I, but I would say a lot of what we've been voting on over the last several meetings, that they, probably worth of it, right? Checks that people go out, right?
Yeah, that's a challenge, right?
That you did find out.
Oh, I agree, but we, I mean, I think with our motion, we're almost, everyone, you know, is, 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 anyway.
Yes. But I know personnel goes through, all personnel motions have to, right? They're voting there, so all that is discussed, but that's a somewhat conventional thing, yeah.
Yeah.
But they might have to be fully get that, right?
Right.
Yeah, two weeks out is a lot.
Yeah.
But the Friday agenda definitely will be something that the board. Definitely.
So maybe we should just play around, having two weeks out and see to that if they're on this to motions.
Well, and they just gave big ideas, right? Again, you may have a motion, right? It's not a big idea what's going to translate into a motion.
Right, that would be.
Yeah, that's, that's.
And then the left part of this, you know, the board was, this is the first time that we put board goals on, right? On the board self-evaluation, so the first time this new board had the opportunity to kind of do that. So the board was clear, the couple of your goals were achieved, of the monthly agreement and the board certification. And said, you know, that the other ones, perhaps, that there's still some more, you know, opportunity to do more work there, you know, with, you know, this kind of referendum. Had some progress and then supporting, we talked about supporting the superintendent for successful transition and then planning for negotiations, so. I said, your, your work is spelled out before us here, right? So of what's coming up. And then I just put that in the very last piece up here, which is about that page that actually came from the book to governance board, governance board. And so I just kind of wanted to just kind of show you like they talked about for a board that's doing what it's supposed to and kind of what the positive risers are in a board work. Of just kind of, you know, actually look at these things and kind of saying, yeah, like that's us, right? Like they focus on governance, they focus on governance mindset, that you are interested in, like just not having expectations, but being engaged. They say like how we vote, not saying how we vote, so we need to make this pass, but how well do we all understand what we're voting on? And that that's what's important, right? Kind of looking at things from a strategic perspective, maybe proactive and forward thinking, supporting the governance functions of the board and have a board superintendent location. So those, to me, are all things that describe how you do your work. So just wanted to share as much as, you know, you described it yourself, just kind of see it, you know, laid out like that, so. That's all that I have about your good self-evaluation, unless you have any other thoughts about it? I think some good good ideas, right?
Yeah.
Some ideas, so. Thank you. Who knows, you might keep seeing me again.
Yeah.
Last for a raise.
Nineteen, nineteen hours towards, uh, early hours.
I have to keep logging into the retirement system and say, cancel.
Let's keep us posted, we would love to have you back.
Yes.
Well, I think it could be through the end of August, they, like I said, they just have to stand on this, so.
You're gonna see us through the Carolinas.
Yeah.
That's what you said, June, I said, oh.
Well, we're, we're making a good day, so, and again, thank you so much for the.
It was August the twenty twenty-sixth.
Yeah, that's what's, so, well, I see your workshop, I'm like, no, we definitely.
That's wrong.
End of the summer is the line in the sand, so, just wanted to, again, say thank you so much, and just what a pleasure, um, it is to work with you, just, thank you for an amazing journey, and I really appreciate it.
We have a little, little gift from all of us to you, so, I'll hug it for everyone, yes.
Thank you, this is so nice, I really appreciate it, and it, like I said, I, I'm just so proud of you guys, and what we've accomplished, and just to kind of watch you grow and evolve, but just kind of, I just feel like you're in an amazing place right now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you, well, your retirement.
I'm very excited, thank you.
Hope to see you soon.
Okay, yeah, see you later.
We have my annual report from the private school submission of the state student safety data system, in part of.
Super exciting question, um, so by law, all teachers in public school districts must use the student safety data system to report all incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, and HIV incidents that occur in their schools, so this information is collected to fulfill safe and, uh, reporting requirements. So the following information is the information that goes to the year, um, so it's a twenty-four year question here, we have had a total of seven incidents, um, one of them was violence, classified as violence, uh, one classified as vandalism, zero substance abuse, neuro weapons, we have five HIVs that were confirmed, um, and then seven alleged injuries, so.
That's for the year, isn't it?
That's for the year, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and, see, yours, I did run into our student representative, now, went to Mexico graduation last evening, and he said he would not make it this evening, I can understand why he's graduated. We do anything in your life? So, we reached out to the superintendent, or, I'm sorry, the president, and I looked at everyone, and I was just doing, I was just doing. Patients, we have board business motions, A one through, A fourteen, any other motion, please?
A motion, I'll send it.
Send it, any questions, comments, or discussion? This is all, because it's, uh, taking the school year, getting July one, or the twenty-third, and, and, uh, not portion of some adoption of board business motions, A one through, A fourteen, this is a, a fifth through, you know, uh, so, clear to do it, send it, send it. You want to do it, send it, obviously, yeah, we have a motion, it's sent on the floor. So for A one through A fourteen, all of us, the favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no, or extensions, and that brings us to board business motions, one and two, any question, please?
I'm a.
Besides that, any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, questions, only down to board business motions, one and two, all of us, the favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no, any additions? On D B one. Questions, worth of motion. Okay, that brings us to the business administrator, board secretary, important, Mr. Murray.
Okay, we have a lot of good things to report, um, twenty twenty-five commencement, so the preparations have all been underway, uh, from the facility standpoint, uh, for the commencement on June twentieth, pending good weather, and, uh, the commencement will be held in R B S, is there a parking space unusual between the board, and, uh, along the grass field adjacent to the ceremony, ready board members are attending, they've already told me, so we relay that information upfront, so, their respect. Uh, we met with the architect, uh, Mr. Fertini, and I met with the architect, if you recall in the past, we, uh, had authorized the architect to do a feasibility study, just to see, um, potential areas for a future referendum, what you can do, you really have to look at the, the environmental issues, any issues, so with that, um, they hired, uh, the engineers, and they did all those studies, they met with us, they give us really a broad brush, um, view of it, and I'm waiting for the final report, we met with the committee, facilities committee this evening, to go over that, and I think, uh, this is a prime, we'll be, um, reporting out a little later, um, and, uh, summer roof project, that we've been planning, it's through the budget, um, they're gonna start delivering materials and possible tear off on Monday, the twenty-third, at school town, um, we discussed with the, the facilities committee, staging areas for the supplies, and then the part of, like, we're gonna be doing, the wing from where the fish tank is, all the way down to the arborium, and all down there, um, and it's not only roof replacement, a lot of things on there, like masonry, uh, gravity vents, things like that, so more than just roof replacement, there are other factors involved, so that starts on the twenty-third, and we're looking to fix up substantially by the first week in August, so we'll keep them on schedule, the last moving contract, and the bench, two projects have been great, um, came on time, came on budget, uh, the audit for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is, uh, tentatively scheduled for the end of August, so work has to be closed down, finances, get ready for that, um, looking at vacation schedule, we'll be good. Uh, the New Jersey Schoolwork Conference, I think, some of you folks have already told me whether you want to attend or not, just, uh, keep in mind, just email me, and then as we get closer, I'll cancel out any reservations, but you can not go in, um, we did register as a group, so after the conference is over, anybody in the board can access, even though they didn't attend, can access online, any materials that might have been handed out. So here's actually a, a good one, I attended a, uh, my annual conference in Atlantic City for the Association of School Business, which, New Jersey, yeah, it's, um, and they give out each year several thousand dollars scholarships for high school students, a lot of, like, my colleagues are K twelve, so they have, we don't, we have, not links, so at the end of the conference, the pro name tagings, and it had been in the draw, I was one of the recipients of, I think, five or six, five or six scholarships, so I contacted, uh, Mr. Siegel, uh, Doctor, Doctor Siegel, over at the high, over at the, not links, to say, uh, if he could award one of these to, uh, you know, high school seniors, um, I gave him some criteria, I made up criteria, but I think it kind of addresses, um, you know, the spirit of, of what the scholarship is about, they're all donated by the associate members for New Jersey, yeah, they all collectively, you know, put these scholarships together, so, um, based on the criteria, Boot and Township, student that was financially deserving, deserving of the scholarship, a student who actively engaged in school or community service activity, maintained good grades, attendance in school, uh, has enrolled in a freshman class for a four-year college in New Jersey, and also has a desire to enter the field of education, so keep the scholarship to somebody who's gonna give back, so, it was great, I was really surprised at how they presented up on the stage, so, I will, I haven't heard back yet, but, uh, I know they have the award ceremony, and graduation, so I think it might be a nice bonus for, 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 for a thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's very nice.
Couldn't keep it myself, but. No, it'll go to good use, and, and I know that, you know, my kids being the recipients of a number of different scholarships, it helps, you know, both are expensive, things are expensive, it's tuition, so, fully have to report.
Thank you, that brings us to the superintendent, board secretary.
Well, once again, I want to say thank you to today for his desire to give back to the school community, uh, in addition to today's desire to give back, we have another former R B S student, Abby Valinsky, working on her gold award project for World Scouts, she's creating a summer reading program for all students, uh, we've sent out a flyer on her behalf, to send, to get the word out, and we set up a collection box for books in the lobby, and we collected hundreds of books, so she's gonna be doing it for someone, it'll be really nice. Uh, a shout out to Mr. Monaco, who was in a real life application of math, I did math in law, and, if, back in May, and, once again, back in May, the debate team traveled to Saint Elizabeth, Saint Elizabeth University to compete, and they did very well, um, on Tuesday, the third of June, and Tuesday, the tenth of June, I did two math meetings to show, showcase our new math programs, uh, new math courses, uh, once again, I plead to the community, if you have any kindergarteners out there, please register them, because it helps us with our planning purposes, and I do have very, very good news, and I'm glad Mrs. Warren Rock is here to hear this, we have been awarded the Systematic Change Grant, uh, Mrs. Morgan Rock and Mrs. Wilson applied for this grant earlier this year, this grant represents a powerful opportunity to deepen our commitment to inclusive education, so over the next year, it will enable us to better support both our students and staff as we transition toward a more inclusive program and practice, this systematic change initiative, the grant is a three-year partnership, all expenses paid, between our school and all dance inclusive facilitator funded through the New Jersey Inclusive Practices Initiative, this collaboration will provide sustained support, resources, and professional development, and we're together to build a more inclusive school environment, and that, it's important.
That's a good question, the video and the map, we do have, it looks like we can find them, yeah.
I have the video and the presentation slides that I gave you for the math presentation tomorrow, tomorrow, you're welcome, they'll be close to talk.
Thank you, and thank you, thank you for, uh, facilitating that, right?
Very nice. It's great, it's great.
Okay, so you have more of a chance to read, uh, really, you have a chance to read the board's other reports, other, your reports, that brings us to presentations.
I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Coburn for stepping up and leading our Washington, D C trip, making it very memorable and enlightening for all our eighth graders, I attended along with Mrs. Morgan, and Savage, and Mrs. Monaco, and Mrs. Nerrich, and I'd like to also say thank you to the H S A for helping out with the expenses, thanks again to the H S A for working together with the school, playing fun day, uh, a very special day and enjoyable for all our students, thanks for pivoting when of a nature did not cooperate, and, and be willing to come back another day, today, uh, congratulations to our trap students and their mentor, Mrs. Esposito, for the best marketplace to date, I spent a lot of money there, great, great job to all our entrepreneurs, and thanks to the head foundation for underwriting this valuable program. Uh, once again, a shout out to Mrs. Coburn and Mrs. Portell, uh, both our upper grade course and band students had, uh, achieved a great, excellent, at the High Notes Festival, and we had a wonderful time at Dornville. Congratulations to Mrs. Snyder's class on their having been chosen as one of the fifty finalists in the Student Treasures Publishing National Book Competition, they presented their books to the school community earlier this year, and next, uh, is our spotlight on student work, spotlight on student work is exemplary work done by students in preschool through third grade, and displayed in the lobby on monthly basis, our spotlight students in kindergarten are Yvonne Sapkota, Gray Passad, Hayley Glander, and Ale Elton Tawi, in first grade, Harrison Newby and Colin Richard, second grade, Jordan Gibbons, Marley Weatherford, Philippe Frank, and Hunter Glan, in third grade, Joey Ponte and Lisa Chanel, and now for the Falcons of the Month, Falcons of the Month are students that exhibit dedication to learning, leadership skills, great attitude, and strong character traits to promote a positive school climate, fifth grade, Emma Matthews, sixth grade, Ariel Morello, seventh grade, Luchiana Lentz, and eighth grade, Brianna Tom, and that concludes my nominations.
Thank you very much, and also have had the chance to read correspondence, one and two, and I bring this to open session number one, the first public comment period will be limited to agenda items only, the second public comment period will be limited to topic, please be mindful that public comment periods are available to include public creative comments and feedback to the board, personal matters, data, data operations are not corporate, so, yes, for orgates, please know it's the most effective to resolve, the appropriate staff members or insurance, or, for change, and concept, questions may be directed to the purpose, school personnel, board, or through email, please leave a statement address through our period, if all comments are limited to five minutes, and, uh, the public, which we just ordered on, Jedi is on. There'll be a lot, people, they do, these are reports, starting with the national sport of education.
All right, it was a lot of, um, there was a lot going on, so they started out with three presentations, the first one was, uh, Laker shout outs, which was nice, they were basically, um, recognizing students, professionals in arts, academics, and sports, it was way too many to go through, and I couldn't type that fast, but a few notable ones were, uh, on a math competition, uh, one of the, I guess it was, uh, nationwide, and they were trying to figure out which sports should be in the, in the Olympics, all these votes on which sports are around, um, so they put, they built a model to determine which sports should be in and out of one thousand and fifty-five teams, uh, they finished in the top five percent. Um, there were three national, uh, merit finalists, uh, for this graduating class, one point five percent, um, and then golf finished in a sectional finals, I think it's a four-year row, they finished in sectional finals. They had another presentation, which was great, honoring retirees out of the district, you could see there was a lot of great passion, and it was pretty emotional, some of the, you know, five, twenty, thirty years, so they did a really good job talking through them, they, they had, uh, a presentation, um, from each of the principals of the school for, uh, teacher or administrator that were retiring, they did a really good job of that, um, there was a good presentation, actually a great presentation, on post-secondary outcomes, um, so they went through, one of the guidance councils went through, um, all the factors that went into the admissions for the class of one point five, uh, very interesting to hear what colleges were thinking how that's evolving at the time, um, early decision, right now, seems to be one of the, um, I won't say easier ways, but there's a higher acceptance rate of early decision, there is, and if you can also, they, um, definitely, uh, sort of encouraged people to do that.
So they still, um, needing more towards S A T scores again, or is it still?
Yes, it's definitely, scores are bad, not all schools, but it's definitely coming back, a lot of schools, absolutely, um, there's more equity, though, uh, we talked about this a lot, uh, I think the very blunt saying that there were certain schools, might be, um, specifically met with them, said, we don't make these happen, um, it's, it's not a race thing, it's a socioeconomic, uh, yeah, so they, it was, uh, definitely, they're looking to have, I'll call it.
The zip code, Mountain Lakes?
Yes.
Not, Mountain Lakes zip code is what they're, they were considering it Mountain Lakes, but the high school, but basically they don't like this zip code, is what they're saying, um, they're trying to get more, you know, privileged kids from the socioeconomic, so, it's a little, it's getting a little bit harder in the Mountain Lakes, it is, so, very interesting.
Was it, was it, you gave it to the Mountain Lakes council?
Council, yeah, gun council, yeah. Um, I, application and acceptance rates, right, I wrote this, uh, fifty-nine percent, I was writing fast, so, um, so maybe it was pretty good, acceptance rate for us, uh, they, they did a whole presentation, too, which was hard to take all the data down, on what schools we were going to, there's, I know, one of the things I remember is there's a move towards more state schools, specifically the itself, E S C, and, and they attributed that to Instagram, um, but, both they.
And there's, there's, there's like a page you all go to, for, for all.
Yes, state schools are up, there's more people applying and getting into the Mountain Lakes state schools, uh, which was very interesting, um, you know, there were five of the, or, there was four or five of the I V's were represented, uh, Harvard, I noticed, was a little like, I think that wasn't on there, but there was somebody who used the I V's, and, uh, just were all representing for Mountain Lakes, um, I think that's it, I can't remember when. I think that's it. I can't remember what else. They had other schools, they talked about it earlier, looking at things. And data shows the strong public schools increased over private, yeah, is what I'm saying. So you had some of the private schools drop, public schools are up. So that was a long presentation, a really good one and insightful. Unfortunately, the whole public had left by the time we gave that presentation, so nobody heard it. The videos up there, people listen to it. I don't know, I guess the slides are up there. You can hear his, he does a good, does a good voiceover on it, so you want to kind of listen to that. Dr. Seigle, Dr. Seigle gave an updating that with CPAG in Mountain Lakes and had a good communication, this continued dialogue with CPAG. They had the graduation last night, congratulations to the class of 2025. They just had it up there, they had it outside. And they had a record number of grants submitted, so Dr. Seigle gave credit to the administration, Mountain Lakes Education Foundation, and the E T U as well. All their help and work on trying to get these grants through, so I think that's a good thing. Just like, you know, here they're trying to get some more grants. That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
This is to the New Jersey School Works Association, nothing. Mars County School Works Association.
I reported on it at the last meeting, I think it was after the.
Educational Services Commission of Mars County, we had a week ago tonight. Once here, there's still a school year where they elected their position there. In a nutshell, they can be, they represent an assembly, which is every school district in Mars County and do outside of Mars County. So the forty select districts, and for those forty districts, they elect, elect fifteen school districts to be on the board of directors. Nearly after the trustees give, so in a group nutshell, it's again on the board of trustees. And other than that, it's just routine business. Group ten for special education, our advisory. Group ten for education definition. I don't have too much right here to tell you here how you reported last meeting. And this brings us directly to the school association.
So HSA developed a leadership for next year and voted in a new poll. And then we had two field meetings in the last week and the coming season was pretty much ended for this year and that's kind of my own voting. President, vice president, and I think some liaisons of committees.
Who is, is it your president and vice president?
Your pres- yes.
Okay.
And then vice president, yes. And then liaison committee pretty much stayed similar.
One thing I'd like to report on is the annual township fireworks presented by Terrasend. The date is Saturday, July 26th, rain date is July 27th. Fireworks add dust at the R B U fields, pre-admission, all are invited.
Stayed by the best fireworks show ever.
Basically, it's raining. Given with our weather, I'm not sure we're going to have a rain date.
We need to slow the rain date.
Do you have to repeat the rain date?
The 27th, the next, the next.
Yes, great.
But they are great.
It's like twenty minutes.
I know, it is. It's been about an hour, it's good.
Yeah.
I was curious, have you not seen the sound like firehouse, I don't know why. You'd think they'd be high up in the sky, but you can't see them.
Oh. You gotta walk across the street.
Yeah, but not, but you have to walk down the field.
They are really good.
You would think you could see them, but you can't. That brings us to people in town for Green Team.
So the Green Team had their June 3rd green fair and it was really well attended. Almost two dozen vendors and international organizations there, sharing all their missions. It was fantastic. We had a lot of great activities for the kids. We had their art station, popcorn, we have a laser guy there. And then beautiful farms from Rockaway had, and Kristen Brown Bell, who's all over the town. She helped with that as well. And so they had like a unicorn, like walking out, they had pony rides, pigs, chickens. It's just still have to go. It was a super feel-good event. It really was wonderful. And the second half of the night, I was doing like the heavier hitters, like there was Dr. Cole from, who teaches environmental science, and skate teams, and what's the, the N G P P, sustainability, and POW, which is protect our woods, wetlands, and water. And they all gave like ten to fifteen minute presentations and it was some Q and A. It was just, we learned a lot.
I also have a question. There was a group, who's, who's of group ten, she was environmental.
Yeah.
Was there, people familiar with that?
Oh, really?
That's right.
Yes, it was, it was nice. And hopefully we'll do it again in two years. Thank you for persevering and making it happen. Yeah, I'm thinking always positive feedback.
And that brings us to the solely transportation. What's solely transportation, they met recently?
Yeah, we met early, we saw like a couple hours ago. So no doubts, but, sorry to say. But just to bring on your one motion that's on the agenda as an end of motion, we did not talk about that, but that's an end of motion. Just to piggyback on what Tom said earlier. The roof replacement starts Monday, it's about 25% of the roof. And after this project's complete, we'll have about 28% that hasn't been updated since 2022 and onward. Should be wrapping up early August and should not affect the summer day camp or the E S R classes. So that's just going to update that. And then as we got next steps for facilities for potential referendum, there was a wetland study provision so that we present a return for any environmental impacts. If we were to consider any building footprint. That's a good place to start and that's a good time.
The roof is that you're doing 25% and then 28% of that. So the piece that's left could be done periodically.
What's left is probably a little bit, because there are different needs to their roofs, so probably more than.
Okay, so like one more summer.
If it doesn't fit into the referendum, then we probably look at another summer.
So is the report, is what it's already finished or it's happening? Is the time?
I can touch on that.
You want to touch on that?
Yeah, so he, so initially we approved it and they have the engineers on the environmental and all that. So I'm waiting for, he met with Dr. Petean. Not yet. Sorry. It is completed, I'm just waiting for the summary report. But the key is, you know, it was again with a broad brush, bird's eye view of looking at area that potentially could, is anything going to impact if we want to do something in the future? So that part's not, I'm just waiting for the final report, but we have some good information to sort of plan and. So the community was going to say, we're. Yeah. And the debt, and the motion for facilities, motions one and two. Is there a second?
All second.
Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Not any questions on the adoption of facilities, motions one and two, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed say no. And the extensions. The others to the last meeting. The last meeting. Are the debt and the motion for fines, motions one, which is under. Is there a second? Second, any questions, comments, or discussion? If not, the question, what can I, the fines, the 13? This is Farda. Brandon.
Yes.
This is Cabana.
Yes.
This is Herman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Mills. This is Nowick. Next topic is personnel, so we best.
The only thing that isn't, I apologize, I did not get the notes out and I know that. But there's really only two appointments that you would know about except the L D T C that we're hiring and then the maintenance technician. Everything else is standard. Thank you.
And if we did this one, we should have sent out.
Right.
Like that, and the motion, motion for personal motions, one through 20. Is there a second? Second, any other questions, comments, or discussion? Any questions on the adoption of personal motions, one through 20, this is all. This is Farda.
Yes.
Brandon.
Yes.
This is Cabana.
Yes.
This is Herman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
This is McBride.
Yes.
Mills. And this is Nowick. To Karen. That brings us to the program committee. They did be also around the same, the same day as personnel. I too apologize for not having this prepared because I've been going in a few different directions since then. A few late nights here and there, so I apologize. Thank you. I know you discussed program motion five. Look at, and the motion for program motions, one through five. Is there a second?
I don't.
Any questions about this or discussion? Not questions on the program motions, one through five, this actually briefly. This is Farda.
Yes.
This is Brandon.
Yes.
This is Cabana.
Yes.
This is Herman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
This is McBride.
Yes.
This is Mills. This is Nowick. Karen. That brings us to policy, I don't think the policy has been as vast.
We have not, and my notes were up after our meeting back in May regarding these two policies. And they were on for the first read in May and now they're on June 3rd. I don't think your mic is on.
It's going in.
It's on. This one's going on.
We hear you, but it's not.
It shows on here. It was all in that.
No, it's still on.
Yeah, it's not there.
I have new batteries in here. Changes to be made.
Yeah, I mean, it shows, it shows that it's on.
There, that's.
That's something.
Wow.
I know.
Yeah, yeah. It shows on. This travels.
Shucks dancing.
People have a podcast now.
I'm sorry. It'll last.
It's like, it's like the good thing that everyone has a big microphone.
So anyway, so these are policies, we even the first read and now they're out for adoption.
Wow, well, thank, thank you for your policy. Put that, may I, motion for policy, motion number one?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other questions, comments, or discussions? Any questions on the adoption of policy, motion number one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed say no. And the extensions, in the system governance, the system provision is not that since the last board meeting, but will be sometime soon, I'm sure. And with that, we have open session number two. The second public comment period will be open to the topic facing likely, the public comment periods are available to the public, the comments and feedback to the board. Personal matters and data day operations are not appropriate subjects for board meetings. Please know it will be most effective to resolve the appropriate staff members or visitors, write to the gym command concept. Questions may be directed to the Berkeley School of Personnel Board through email, please station email address or record all comments within two to five minutes. Anyone from the public wish to address the board on any matter. Yes?
Megan Johnson, 33, Hill Press Group. It hit me that this will be the last board game when my kids are still in K through eight school, from the over to Mountain Lakes. And I've attended meetings sporadically over the years, so I'm sometimes very proud, sometimes very thin. And I just wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation to the teachers and staff that have such a wonderful impact on my kids. They've been reflecting over their time here at R B S over the last couple of weeks and it's hilarious to hear what to stand about in their minds, what memories they have. With that, also the new administration. It's been a wonderful year and you guys really had to hit the ground running. The communication has been fantastic to the point that at one point I did wonder if all of the children were just testing the new folks in the building or we just had, you know, more insight as to what was happening around the building. So it's really appreciated. I think that's, that's probably the ladder in our case, although, you know, they're all kids, they test them all the time. So I just wanted to say thank you and that the work you do does not go in the distance. We often, as parents, don't necessarily come forward and recognize the good things that are happening. Oh, just sporadically, right? You know, we can say teacher appreciation, we can, we make the effort, but. Yeah, I wanted to thank those two and also the board. I know you guys are volunteering and giving up a lot of time out of your lives. And the work is hard and can't imagine it's always the most fun thing you'd be doing and late nights. And again, a lot of times we only show up when we've got concerns or poor questions, rightfully so. We need to make sure that's happening, but I just wanted to take a moment, people like kids are out of the building, to just say thank you to the community that is pleasure and influence.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very much appreciate it.
Yeah.
Is there also the public wish to address the board on any matter? Thank you. That brings us to all business, all businesses come before the board.
Yeah.
It is.
The newsletter. So obviously that was brought up this evening and, you know, some of us have talked about it a little bit. And I think it's an opportune time, being that it's the end of the year, to get one out immediately. And I thought, I talked to Mr. Petean by about kind of giving his high level bullet points of successes and contributions to the district being his first year. And then if we could collaborate tonight on what we think our five or 10 are as board, putting together, I'm happy to write it up. And then we could blast it by Friday.
I think in a particular order, the grant should be on all the administrations that all work on that, but kudos, and that should help, we should know that we're looking to be the security.
Master board certification, contract negotiations, all, right?
Yeah, it's different teachers.
Teachers.
Can we take that off, right? I'm not sure you can. That makes you work.
I could say close, no?
Yeah, under, under.
I said contracts, so that Mountain Lakes would probably be the first thing that points of mind.
I think that.
Right, articulation.
Articulation. So everything fits that. That's right. A lot, we've done a lot more than we should have.
Dr. Seigle's been very appreciative of the, of the Gilson old place as well, so I think that's something that he's called the place and then he finds, so I think we should put that up there.
I think that it's effort that going to go with restructuring the math is a huge thing to highlight. And it's been a sore spot for a long time. And I think that like, just the way we had, the kids had to end up doubling, not a sore spot in that I feel like all kids were served, students were served. But I think offering that aid is, is great. I just feel like each kid is going to be able to be told, I'm just really happy about it. I don't need to just like. So.
Would you agree on that like curriculum and answers and development for math and LA?
And yeah, but I think it's more specific. I think it is more specific and also invite people if they have questions to reach out to Mr. Petean.
I can, I think it's a great idea. I love the idea and I can definitely get you several bullet points by tomorrow.
Maybe tomorrow is better.
I can, let me rephrase, I can definitely get you several bullet points by tomorrow.
And please feel free to send me things, verbiage or, you know, if you guys think of anything now. I have high level notes, but just, I'll send it out and make sure that everybody's comfortable with whatever.
You can read it in the reference, you're making like you comments.
Right.
Post that, you can do that.
Right.
And then you've been doing that longer.
No problem. Yeah, and then just to kind of piggyback off of this, and this is just my vision, but I wanted to kind of flush it out with everyone. Yeah, um, and then just to kind of piggyback off of this, and this is just my vision, but I wanted to kind of flush it out with everyone, that we do this, you know, beginning of the year, kind of right before the holidays. And then, you know, springtime, and then year-end, so four times a year, um, from this perspective and our perspective. Is that okay?
Yeah. I mean, I started to think, just, um, can you visit a, how we get on our goals?
Right.
The district and contacting you, but what's really helpful too is, you know, committees, and what we have achieved in committees, like one or two items from chairs. And incorporating that on those quarterly type newsletters, but the year-end is the longer one, the bigger wrap-up. Right, and so the, it should be on there as an auxiliary. And, um, I'll mention, um, a number of teachers that are, like you were mentioning, LA, like, highlight the, where the building.
Yeah, that was important, and, uh, it's, uh, Pete, permission.
Drive towards inclusion.
Did my Thursday just get busy doing, uh, planning out the board also?
Yeah, I was there, please, do this. No. Goodbye.
Sounds good then. So, do I get marks? I was just, uh, just a last.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're amazing.
Yes, thank you, of course. So how, when you said blasted out, how, how?
So I think, you know, the vehicles would be the virtual backpack, um, I don't know that we'll be able to get it to township this month.
By Friday?
Yeah, uh, the deadline's typically Wednesday.
Did we have a last?
Oh, and they're off tomorrow for duty, so.
That shouldn't say, oh, we tried to do a last.
Put it next one.
Exactly.
We get some, we'll get on our website.
Yeah, but also, I mean, we, we bound to, um, sending information out about the, you know, the locations, contracting. Can we send them up to the school, or does it need some message attaching it?
Yeah, I can, that'd be great. And that, that's easy, and, um, township newsletter would be great.
Yeah. And we get the most of that, and then the.